Good evening and welcome to this public forum with the candidates for Bismarck City Commission. I'm Anessa Pfeifer Johnson with the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is cosponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are two candidates running for election for one open seat in the Bismarck City Commission, and both candidates have joined us here tonight. They are Richard Bohr and Steve Markort. The audience is invited to submit questions using the index cards provided to you. Viewers at home can phone in questions by calling 355-1312 between now and 7:35 PM tonight only, September 29th. That number again is 355-1312. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people in the city of Bismarck. Now, let's meet our candidates. You each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Bismarck City Commission. Richard Bohr, you may begin.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm seeking office for several reasons. I think it's a very important and exciting time in the growth of Bismarck to provide a framework for its continued success. I believe the Commission will be making key decisions on the future of Bismarck, and I would like to be part of it. I also think the city of Bismarck can become more efficient in providing services and at the same time become more user-friendly. And finally, I think it's important to have an operating business owner representing the citizens on the City Commission.
Thank you. Steve Markort, you may begin.
I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us this evening. I'm running for City Commission again. I ran in June, and then my seminary's position is available. So, as I had mentioned at that time, with my leadership ability that I've had on the school board for eight years, I feel I'm a great fit for the City Commission. I've seen the growth that we've had in the school district, and I think with my leadership abilities and my background and expertise with working with this school district that I can help manage the growth of Bismarck. Going around door-to-door, visiting with our constituents, they'd like to see the balance that I would provide onto the City Commission as I have on the school district. I've worked with a lot of the different entities while I was on the school board, and I can fulfill those -- basically fulfill those duties as a City Commissioner.
Thank you. And now, we'll move on to the questions developed by members of the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, and our audience here tonight. For our audience here to submit a question, please use the index cards provided on your chairs. Viewers at home can phone in questions by calling 355-1312 between now and 7:35 PM tonight, September 29th. That number again is 355-1312. Candidates have not been given advanced copies of the questions, and each candidate will have only 60 seconds to respond to the question. Please comply with our time restrictions so that we can get to as many questions as possible tonight. Our timer will let you know when you're down to 30 seconds, then 10, and then stop. And now, on to our first question. Mr. Bohr, you are first tonight, and then I'll be alternating questions between the two of you. What do you believe are priority issues for the city of Bismarck for the next four years?
I think the priority issues are, obviously, I think it's kind of a talking point and a frequent, I hear, is obviously affordable housing and just maintaining essential workers. Attracting workers and having affordable housing is probably one of the biggest issues, I think, we will deal with. Infrastructure throughout the city, I think, will be an issue with its expansion. Obviously, the taxpayers are asked to fund that, and I think it's important, obviously, to have some system and possibly look at new alternatives for how we finance things and a new approach to actual city development.
Thank you. Mr. Markort, what do you believe are the priority issues for the city of Bismarck in the next four years?
Well, basically, it is affordable housing, infrastructure, and safety. Now, that's one thing that us as a City Commissioner are going to have to figure out what we want to do, where we want to spend that taxpayers' money. We do need to have a lot more young people coming into the city, but with that, there isn't affordable housing, and that's something that we need to work with all the other entities, the Chamber, the Bismarck Mandan, Home Builders Association, and get the communication aspect going. And that's basically what we need to do, is communicate. Communicate with the public, communicate with all of our vested people that have an interest in that, and to be able to work on infrastructure, not just infrastructure as far as roads, but also infrastructure as far as people. The other one is going to be safety. Safety is a big issue, just walking around knocking door-to-door. That's one of the main things that a lot of my constituents have been visiting with me about.
Thank you. Next question starts with you. The city of Bismarck has a plan for downtown. It potentially includes the development of an underpass, a plaza, and other urban futures. How would you like the city to deal with downtown development?
Our downtown is unique. It wasn't always that way. When I grew up here, or didn't grow up here, when I moved here in 1989, you know, there wasn't much for downtown, and it has blossomed. There's been a lot of work and effort in, a lot of people to be able to get downtown the way it is, and I applaud them for doing that. And also, it's the vision of the City Commission to be able to expand on that. And basically, like I had said before, it is communication with all the constituents involved downtown. The underground on Fifth there is something that we need to discuss. We also have to keep in mind to keep a balance between downtown and on the north side of Bismarck, too, because we are going to the north as our school district has seen it. So, we have to make sure our infrastructure there. But as far as downtown, we need to keep going forward with that.
Thank you. Same question for you, Mr. Bohr. The city of Bismarck has a plan for downtown. It potentially includes the development of an underpass, plaza, and other urban futures. How would you like the city to deal with downtown development?
Actually, I love downtown. Both my wife and I own businesses. They're both downtown. I made a significant investment in downtown. I own the office building on the corner of Second and Main. I do, I understand, I've actually read through the reports, that in the master plan they came up with for that, there's kind of the three main parts to the beginning of it, and they are kind of quieting of Main Street, the actual plaza in front of Depot, and Fifth Street development. Of that, the plan calls for about $22.5 million in public funding to support those to start with, and I think it's important, I think it's a very expensive proposal, but I think it would be great, but I'd like to see how it's going to be financed, because those are the three main things that they want to do to jumpstart it.
Thank you. Next question is for you, Mr. Bohr. What do you think is the most effective way to provide property tax relief in Bismarck?
Well, I think, again, I think providing services to the citizens of Bismarck and them be efficient services. I think it can certainly be streamlined. In our business, there's approximately, I believe it's about 15 or 16 Bismarck departments. We work with about 12 of them on a regular basis in our business, and I'm very familiar with how they operate, and I think there's certainly some efficiencies that could be looked at in how quickly they provide those services.
Okay, thank you. Same question for you. What do you think is the most effective way to provide property tax relief?
The most effective way is, you know, I think what we need to do is we need to visit with the legislators as far as, a lot of our growth has to do with some of the oil impact also, and to be able to get some of those funds into our constituents. Another thing is, like Mr. Bohr had said, some of the inefficiencies that are in some of the departments, not saying all of them, but there's some of them that we need to, and that's when I had spoke earlier about infrastructure, and not just dealing with roads, it's dealing with people. We had to make sure that we have the people in the right positions to be able to handle the growth of our great city to make it the way it is. What I would do is I would visit with the legislators to see what we can do as far as giving some of our tax money back with oil impact, because that is also one of the main reasons why a lot of people are moving to Bismarck and not all the way out west.
Thank you. Next question is for you. According to the 2010 census, there are nearly 4,000 Native Americans living in Burley and Morton Counties, including Bismarck. What ideas do you have for our city to be welcoming and inclusive to all the people who live here?
One of the things that we need to do, and I know as far as being on the school district, we've worked with the different liaisons for our Native American community to be able to welcome them in and to be able to educate them and to understand the cultural differences between us, but that's just not our Native American community, that's everyone that's coming into our city. You know, we have Lutheran Services are bringing different groups of people in. So, I mean, our city is growing, but not just with ethnicity also, and we have to be able to be in open mind and communicate, and communicate with their human services to be able to provide different programs and services for those people that are coming to the city and to be able to help them acclimate into our culture.
Thank you. Mr. Bohr, according to the 2010 census, there are nearly 4,000 Native Americans living in Burley and Morton Counties, including Bismarck. What ideas do you have for our city to be welcoming and inclusive to all the people who live here?
I think, actually, as part of the portfolio that the new Commissioner will have, it is intergovernmental relations, and so I think it would be a very important and, obviously, a great thing to include everyone. There are many different ethnicities that are moving to Bismarck. There's actually, a good example of that is that there is, I believe it's a Mexican market that's moving just a few blocks away from my home, and I'm very interested, actually, in seeing that. I think with an unemployment rate of approximately 2.4 percent, that including them is certainly much, it's very easy. I think there's certainly jobs available, and I think employers will certainly be looking to fill those job positions.
Thank you. Mr. Bohr, first question, or this question. What do you see as the future transportation needs and how Bismarck will adjust to the growth?
Obviously, again, infrastructure and roads are going to be a big thing. Providing public transit, I think, is going to become more important to the city of Bismarck and how is that funded. I also think that, obviously, taxpayers typically fund road improvements and that type of thing, and I guess it's really to determine, I think the citizens really need to determine what type of public transportation they want, and it's up to us, I think, to help provide a framework to determine how do we pay for it.
Thank you. Mr. Markort, what do you see as the future transportation needs and public transport here in Bismarck?
A lot of cars going, a lot of different places. We need to make sure our thoroughfares and visit with our other entities that we're working with. You know, as far as the school district, when I was on there, we made sure that we visited with the city and to be able to let them know ahead of time where we're going to be putting a school, where roads are going to have to go on. You know, just working with all the different entities. Basically, it's the communication aspect of it, again. We have to get out in front, be able to talk to everyone, this is what we're doing, this is what's happening. I would hope that we would use a better efficiency of our public transit and to make sure that it's safe. That's one thing that when we had discussed as far as some of our students riding the public transit to go to schools, working with them, was a safety factor. I think we have to make sure that that is a safe option for a lot of our constituents, and, you know, visiting and working with the police department on that would be a great attribute.
Thank you. And the question is now for you. Many developers and home builders believe the city process for engineer review and inspections needs changing to increase its efficiency. Do you agree or disagree, and what would you do, or what would you propose to change the current system?
Yes, I agree. That is one of the things that I have spoken to many different people on, and that is one issue amongst many. But, you know, that's where we have to, you know, work with the infrastructure as far as on the people's side. Do we have the right people in the positions to do what they need to be doing? Our job as City Commissioners is not to micromanage, but to be able to hire people to be put in those positions. There is some efficiency issues, and that's one thing that we need to discuss as a City Commission and how we're going to move forward with that. You know, do we have to hire another person for the job? Do we have to hire, you know, there's many different things that we need to discuss on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bohr, many developers and home builders believe the city process for engineer review and inspections needs changing to increase its efficiency. Do you agree or disagree, and what would you propose to change the current system?
I also agree with that. My firm is, I own an architecture firm. We're very familiar with how the process works and how many people are involved in that process. We have many developers, private owners, and homeowners that come to us and need to get their buildings finished. The issue is we have a limited timeframe to do that and as far as our seasons go, and I think the process needs to be faster. A quick example of that is just, we just recently completed a project. It was a small warehouse. It was about 10,000 square feet. There were eight people involved in designing it, and it took two months. The city's review process took three months and 14 people to review it, and I think the process needs to change.
Thank you. Your question, Mr. Bohr. As a citizen, where do you think city government has done a good job, and where do you think the city should improve?
I think overall, I think the city does a great job. I'm a lifelong resident of Bismarck. I have lived here all my life, and I think it's a great city. That's why I want to be part of it. I think there's, I think the redevelopment of downtown that's happened, it's happened for a few reasons. I think there was a plan put in place to do that. I think there were also a lot of people that wanted to see that completed, and it took both, it took both public entities and a private sector that obviously financed a lot of the improvements of downtown and other parts of the area of Bismarck to do that. So, it's really a collaboration, I think, between the two, and I guess I just look forward to being part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Markort, as a citizen, where do you think city government has done a good job, and where do you think the city can improve?
The city has done a good job in quite a few different areas. I think, you know, I agree with Mr. Bohr on a lot of those same issues, but I think what we need to do is, you know, further education, educating our public on what we're doing and how we're doing that. So, basically, it's going to be on a communication aspect of it. We need to communicate with our people a lot better, and I know that's easier said than done. We've done it on the school district, too, and it all depends if people are going to come to the meetings or not and voice their opinion until after everything's said and done. Usually, that's what happens once in a while, but I would say, like I said when I was visiting with our constituents, a lot of it is just public safety. We have a lot of people moving into the city, and we're working on it. You know, the budget showed four new police officers, but I do believe we're still a little bit short on that, and that's one thing that people want, is good schools and be safe and have a nice environment to raise their family. We're doing real well in a lot of areas, but I think we're at the point where it's going to stretch.
Thank you. What is your position on the current lodging tax, revenue of which is used for tourism promotion?
We, I'm not against it at all. We have a lot of people that come into the city, and we should be able to use that tax to help promote our city.
Thank you. Mr. Bohr, what's your position on the current lodging tax, revenue of which is used for tourism promotion?
I don't disapprove of the lodging tax. I think that it could be used in a little bit more diverse way, I think. Generally speaking, though, I guess, obviously, attracting people to come to Bismarck and spend money in Bismarck, there's an advantage to that, and using a tax, a lodging tax as part of that certainly makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Bohr, what are your priorities for the use of sales tax?
As far as use of sales tax, I think, I guess it just depends on what the citizens are looking for, I think. As far as, I can't think of anything specific that I would pick, I guess, I guess as the priority for the sales tax use, but I mean, it just depends on the type of programs the citizens are looking for.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Markort, what are your priorities for the use of our sales tax?
That's basically a communication aspect, again, basically communicating with our constituents and getting their feedback on what we need to do as far as the city and what they see that that tax needs to go for. We, as a board, would have to discuss that and, like I said, listen to our constituents. So, it's a communication aspect and visit back and forth and make the right decision from there.
Thank you. Economic development is a public-private partnership with the business community and the city. What is your vision of economic development, and how do you propose addressing the low unemployment rate? How do we recruit people to fill these jobs?
Offer affordable housing. That's something that we might have to take some different looks at as far as how we're going to have affordable housing in the city of Bismarck, to be able to have people come in to work in a lot of those jobs that are available, that aren't being filled, so we don't have to watch buildings that are closed, businesses are closed because there's no workers. When I was with the school district, we worked with a couple of different projects as far as, the Community Bowl was a big one as far as private and city. So, it, does it work? You darn right it does. It's a lot of work, as the Chamber can attest to that, but it was a lot of work by a lot of people, the city also, along with the school district, and some of our private schools also. So, does it work? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bohr, economic development is a public-private partnership with the business community and the city. What is your vision of economic development, and how do you propose addressing the low unemployment rate? How do we recruit people to fill these jobs?
We do have issues if anybody's been out to eat lately. I know that just recruiting and maintaining essential workers is, again, a huge issue, and housing costs are part of that. I think, I think certainly putting both private and public entities together to look at, I think one of the options, I think, would be to look at, basically, I think, an increase in density possibly for a specific development. I think there could be a pilot program for that where the developers and the city come and they kind of set aside the rules they've had in the past for development and look at what can we do better and what we, how we can attain that, basically, through both public and private funding or input.
Thank you. I just got this question from the audience, and it kind of continues with what you were saying. How specifically do you think we can address affordable housing?
I think, just in the process that we go through, one of the big things as far as affordable housing is really the cost of land to start with. So, increasing the density of that, I think, is almost only, one of the only ways to do that. I think the city also needs to relook at what they allow for lot sizes. In much larger communities, lot sizes are generally speaking smaller, and I think there's been some communities where they've had narrower streets and which, and then they combine, actually, infrastructure within those, between houses, or if you can combine utilities between them, sanitary sewer is an example, and have fewer connections to main services, and there's a lot of, it works in a lot of ways. It just maintaining the facilities and smaller lot sizes and smaller houses.
Thank you. Mr. Markort, any other ideas? How specifically will you address affordable housing?
That's basically about the same thing. I know the city is already looking at doing a lot of those and implementing them into all-new and some of the current, depending on how far the process has gone and a lot of the developments on the north side. So, I mean, City Commission has already been visiting with that and working on that same plan as we speak. Yeah, basically, it's cost. It costs a lot of money. When we were buying land for the schools and to buy land for the new elementary schools, land costs are extremely expensive. How do we get around it? That's something that we're going to need to work with all entities involved, communicate this is what we need to do. The ideas are out there. We just need to make sure that we listen to everyone involved, get an idea, and then make a decision from there.
Thank you. What is your position on the idea of a new arena for the community? Is one needed, and if so, how would it be funded?
A new arena. The one thing that we need to keep in mind is, you know, what are we trying to target or, you know, what is our aspect of it? I think something would be nice to have, to be able to have larger concerts and stuff, and that might be a part of a public-private, well, like the Community Bowl. You know, one thing that, when we think of something like that, we have to look at, sometimes we're just not in the right spot, you know, as far as geographically. We're too close to Minneapolis, we're too close to Fargo, too close to Minot for some of those concerts. So, when the concerts are coming in and touring, sometimes it's just too close to be able to pull in enough people to be able to get those concerts and those dollars to be able to offer those to our citizens. Would I like to see something? I would. How is it going to be funded? That's something that we're going to have to discuss, but like I said, sometimes just geographically, that's something that we need to look at to be able to bring people in.
Thank you. Same question for you. What is your position on the idea of a new arena for the community? Is one needed, and if so, how would it be funded?
I would certainly like to see a study of where that could go and what the actual costs might be for that. I think it's very interesting that the downtown redevelopment plan that was just recently adopted actually included some additional parking ramps for the, that apparently must serve the civic center. It looks like the study included about two new parking garages for 600 cars, if I recall. So, I think we need to look at, relook at that and see what can be done or if it should be done somewhere else. Multiple funding, I really think. I don't think it should just be funded through one source. I think both public and private development could certainly do that, and I guess I think it just certainly needs a second look and a second, you know, option of where that can possibly go.
Thank you. Mr. Bohr, should this Bismarck City Commission collaborate with the Burley County Commission?
Absolutely. I've worked with both city and county agencies. I think, and again, I think it's really, I look forward to an opportunity to work with them together. One of the portfolios for this commission seat is actually the liaison between intergovernmental relations, and I would like to be part of that. There's some wonderful people that work for the county. The county actually provides some services, I think, in a faster man- provides some services, I think, in a faster manner than the city does. Um, I think we need to look at that. Um, I've also worked with, um, both the city and the county in developing their original emergency management facility in Bismarck. Uh, there, there, there's a lot of wonderful people that work in both the city and the county.
Thank you. Should the Bismarck City Commission collaborate with the Burleigh County Commission?
Of course. And then in my last position, that was on, on the school district where I was president twice, we had done that quite often as far as visit with the, um, Burleigh County as far as the smaller schools. Um, yes, the, there's a lot of things that, that we can do and, and combine and, and be able to visit with, um, with Burleigh County. Um, you know, we are the largest city in them, so I would hope that they would, uh, you know, have a, uh, you know, a, a seat to a certain extent, but, uh, we, um, yeah, like I said, I, I've worked with them all before and they're, um, to be able to go back and forth and visit and getting ideas and, and some different creativity. Uh, our city is growing in amongst, you know, Burleigh County, so that's something that we need to make sure that they are, uh, involved with as far as streets, uh, infrastructure, um, to be able to get our people in and out, uh, from the outskirts.
Thank you. The question from our audience expands on that and says, "With all the demands on the community, how do you propose to enhance the communication between the city commission, school board, park board, and legislative delegation? How do we cooperate to save the community more money?"
Visit, ask. Basically, they'd make, pick up their phone and call. I mean, when we were on the school district, if we wanted something, you know, with the city, you, you pick it up and call. And to be able to have open communication between all entities involved, that's the only way that you're going to be able to grow and, as a community and be effective with it. And if you don't have that communication, you better find out someone that is going to have communication with that and work through them, but you should have direct communication with all entities involved. Um, it, with, uh, Mr. Bittner, if I had a question as far as, uh, you know, we're looking at this, that, as far as, uh, it was a superintendent, um, you know, we had to, uh, work together to be able to, uh, get the, uh, position which the Bismarck Public Schools now handles for Burleigh County. You did pick up the phone and call, and I think I have the background to be able to do that, to be able to communicate with those other government entities because I've done it already before.
Thank you. Mr. Bor, with all the demands on the community, how do you propose enhancing the communication between the city commission, the school board, park board, and legislative delegation? How do we cooperate to save our community more?
I think collaboration between all of them, it's a, it's really a, I mean, it's in all our best interests, um, to get along. It's not a, you know, it's mine and theirs. I, I really do believe that there's, like, again, I, I really do believe there's great people on both sides of the table. And, um, bringing them together and talking to them and get, like, just getting to know people. I, I think it's much harder to say no to someone if you know them personally. Um, and I think, um, community interest, um, it's really what's best for the, the taxpayer and what's best for our community.
Thank you. What is your position on the use of tax increment fund, the TIF, for projects and programs?
Um, actually, I probably feel a little bit differently than some people about that. I, I think the TIF, uh, fund is, is fine. I think, um, it's, it's certainly financed, uh, some things that probably wouldn't happen otherwise. Uh, it, it, it provided, I think, for a better downtown, long-term. Um, I don't, I think that there should be more oversight as to how that is spent, however. I, I, I don't know that I agree that, that the funds are set aside and, and, um, that the public has, um, a little, um, uh, say in what they're used for.
Thank you. What is your position on the tax increment fund, TIF, for projects and programs?
Uh, I think it can be used, utilized in a certain, I think we need to take a look at, um, a different funding mechanism. Uh, the TIF funds, uh, take away from the, the school district and some of the other entities, but, uh, with the last one, we, uh, the school district got, um, a lot of our money back that we had, was proposed to us to begin with. So I think we need to have, uh, discussions on, uh, different funding mechanisms, uh, to see if we even still use a TIF or if we use, uh, an alternative.
Thank you. Mr. Markort, what is the first issue you will address if reelected to the Bismarck City Commission?
First issue, that unfortunately, there's many and not just one issue that, that I'm concerned about. Uh, one thing, um, basically visiting with my constituents and last, uh, since I, uh, actually since June, uh, when I didn't, uh, people said, you know, "Steve, you know, we, you wish we would get on there," but basically their biggest thing is, is safety in the city. They want to be able to, to bike, uh, downtown late at night. They want to be able to walk. Um, you know, we got a lot of people, different people coming into, uh, the city of Bismarck. And with that is not all good people. Um, we have to make sure that our citizens are safe, the streets are safe for our kids, um, you know, but we have to provide services for those people also. So, I mean, there's a lot of different aspects and a lot of different octopus legs that are going to go into what we need to do as a city commission. Uh, affordable housing, um, we have to also, as far as our basic, uh, transportation, uh, roads, you know, there's a lot on the table and that's why I think it's best at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Bor, what is the first issue you will address? What's your priority if you're elected?
I think the first issue is really to determine if, if we are, if the city of Bismarck is short-staffed. I, I think obviously there's some, i- in the police department, uh, is it building inspections, whatever department, are we short-staffed in order to provide the services to our, to our, um, to the community? Uh, I also think that it really needs, some of our services need to be streamlined, I think, no doubt. Um, and I think, uh, obviously, safety and affordable housing. Um, the ability to attract essential workers is, is huge for Bismarck. Um, it just, with the unemployment rate, the, what it's at, um, we, we need to do something to maintain and increase the number of people that will move here.
Thank you. I'm looking, I'm looking through our questions to see if we've addressed them all yet. Just one moment. I believe we have. Do we have any other questions from the audience? Well, maybe I'll, um, that, that's fine. Maybe we'll be able to open up the floor a little bit, give you each a minute or, or not. Um, okay. And I believe it's, the question goes to you, right? What is your position regarding the commission's override of the citizens' veto of civi- s-
Civic Center.
Civic Center expenses. Does that sound right?
Expansion.
Expansion, thank you. Okay. What is your position regarding the commission's override of the citizens' veto of civic center expansion?
I did not agree with that at all. Um, I, um, I, I believed, I don't believe it was, it should have been interpreted that, um, when the citizens voted that they did not want to spend $70 million on a expansion of the civic center, that they didn't object to spending 30. Um, I think it should have been, it, it should have had more public input to start with because obviously there was not a consensus, uh, but of the citizens of what they wanted. Um, I think that came down to really that, um, I, I don't think, I just don't think that, um, that's the way it should have been handled. I think it was handled poorly.
Thank you. Mr. Markort?
Originally, yes. Um, you know, I had voted against it, also at the 70 million. I, I think that one thing that we need to make sure that we keep in mind is we need to, uh, communicate with our patrons all the time. And if there was going to be something that wa- was different, uh, which it turned out to be, where they just went with the 30 and, and didn't do what the, the citizens said, I think they needed to be a better job of communication with that. And to get out in the forefront and say, "Well, this is our needs and this is why we need it" and, and to be able to do that. I think one thing, it's in the past. Um, should we do it again? Uh, heck no. I mean, if, um, if I got, uh, listening to my constituents and they're going to tell me one thing, that's the way that I'm going to go. Um, one thing though, since it is in the past, it, uh, when we bring people in to conventions, that's one of the largest things when we go out to conventions, it brings people in, you stay there, you all of a sudden they're paying the tax, they're paying the lodging tax, and they're bringing people in because these, uh, conferences are for days, not just overnight.
Thank you. Another question. What should the commission do, what can the commission do to help those making only $10 an hour with affordable housing? How affordable will affordable housing be for people making only $10 an hour?
That's, uh, that's a tough question. Um, you know, that's one thing where we have to, you know, kind of look at affordable housing, but what is the answer? Um, we need to basically communicate with our developers and with the landowners and, and get a, you know, that's something, do we visit with the legislator and get more money in from the legislative aspect of that? Or, you know, what, uh, what are the different options that we need to do? Um, do the, it's tough just to tell a business, "Hey, you know what? That you're only paying $10 an hour. We think you should do 15." You, you can't do that. Um, basically, if you want to retain your employees, you're going to have to pay them well enough if your business is growing. Um, as a city commission, if anything, I think we just communicate with, uh, all of our entities involved, visit with the legislators and governor, and as far as our oil tax, uh, money, hopefully get something in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Bor, what should the commission do, what can the commission do to help those making only $10 an hour with affordable housing? How affordable will this affordable housing be?
That's very diff- you, you're right. That, that is a very difficult question. I, I think, you know, obviously, multi-tenant housing and it's just a roommate, unfortunately. Um, I, it, $10 an hour is a very difficult wage, uh, to maintain. Um, that, it, it just basic needs, uh, to be honest with you, uh, just, um, as far as even health insurance and housing, there, it doesn't leave much. It's very unfortunate. Um, how to, how to provide housing, I, again, I, I think that's very hard to do, especially in our economy and what the cost of housing is. Um, I don't know that we'd ever be able to address affordable housing at, at $10 an hour, unfortunately.
Thank you. One last question, hopefully it's easier. Um, what do you see as the city of Bismarck's role in promoting active, healthy lifestyles?
Um, I, I think, actually, I think it's a, our community's great. Um, I think we're very fortunate and I know the city's expanding, but we have great parks. Um, my, um, my son actually, um, attempted, my son is eight. Um, he attempted this summer to, uh, go to, uh, he, he checked it out and there are apparently 48 parks in Bismarck and he wanted to visit all of them. Uh, unfortunately, he wanted to visit them all on the same day. Um, we made it through 15 of them. Um, just, I think, get out and, and, and explore Bismarck, I think. Uh, it's, again, it's a great community to live in. Um, there's a lot of opportunities for that. I think our park district does a wonderful job.
Thank you. Mr. Markort, what do you see as the city of Bismarck's role in promoting active, healthy lifestyles?
Uh, I think if you just look at their, uh, the city's plan as far as some of the, the options that they have, different parks, um, we do a good job. Like, uh, Mr. Bor said, uh, there's a lot of them in town here. You know, sometimes we're just limited as far as our, our weather. Uh, maybe some option of some more winter sports outside, who, you know, that, that's something that the, that the park, uh, Parks and Rec need to, uh, probably communicate with them. But, you know, being able to, uh, partner with those, uh, other entities and to get ideas and to work with, uh, our builders groups as far as, uh, different equipment and stuff in different areas, as far as, uh, playgrounds and stuff. I know they're working on, uh, different options on that. Um, basically, it's just a, a safety issue. And like I said, I think, you know, from what I've been hearing and when walking around town, um, there is a definite concern and we are at that breaking point, or that's, we're stretched, okay? We're not broken yet and they, everyone is doing a good job, but I think we need to keep o- open communication lines and, uh, just visit with the park district.
Thank you so much. Again, um, candidates, thank you so much for being here tonight. You will now have one minute to provide a closing comment. Mr. Markort?
Thanks again. Um, and like I said earlier, you know, basically, a lot of these questions are tough questions, but that's what we as a city commission need to do. We need to handle those tough questions and how do we react to them and how have we done in the past. I have the background and the leadership capabilities that I have shown already on the school district. And that's one of the main issues that when people are moving into Bismarck is just city, schools, safety, and then just overall recreation like what we just talked about. I was on the, I was on the school side and I think with my background, my leadership ability, I can help the commission move forward with a growing city as we are to make those decisions. Are there easy decisions? No. We have a lot of, um, tough decisions coming down the road. And to be able to handle those and to be able to handle the public input, which I have in the past, uh, working with the school district, to be able to sort that out and make what's the best decision for a great city that I'm happy to live in.
Thank you. Mr. Bor, closing comment?
Um, I, I really think Bismarck is an exceptional community to live in. Um, I am actually the third generation in my family to be born and raised here. Uh, my son is the fourth. Um, my wife and I, um, have actually purchased a house, um, years ago, um, that, um, I, it's on the same street I grew up on. My son rides up and his bike up and down the same sidewalks I did. Um, I, I really want to be part of the community and make it a place that my son wants to return to, uh, someday and bring his family up in. I think there's a lot of challenges to that. Um, I think, but I think, I think we can do it. I, I think Bismarck, again, is, is a great place to live and I just, um, I think they're great citizens. Um, it, if you go throughout the country, I think you'd find that, um, Bismarck, um, the people in Bismarck, even with the new influx of people, are wonderful. Um, they're, people greet people, people open doors for people. It's a, it's a great community to live in.
Thank you. And thank you for watching. I want to thank the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this form. Thank you to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and our issues. This program will replay several times on Government Access Cable Channel Two and will be available for online viewing at www dot free TV dot org in the eight days leading to the Bismarck City Commission election. Before we close this candidate form, I want to remind you that voting in North Dakota is very simple and you can find voting information at your county auditor's office and from the office of the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you and good night.